Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. And welcome to the Shelby County Board of Education's September 25th Board Business Meeting.
Good evening. My name is Sherri Johnson and I am a senior at Overston High School. During tonight's board meeting, the members will elaborate more on this month's key performance indicator, which focuses on finding a solution to teacher vacancy and updating school culture surveys. In addition, for the parents who plan to enroll upcoming pre-K students, the board will once again be discussing the continuation in the application for Head Start. Lastly, one of the main purposes for this board meeting is to approve of the remaining supplemental instruction contracts. Well, that's all I have for you today. Thank you for watching. Have a great night.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. We want to keep in our thoughts and prayers a loss of life of one of our students at Robert R. Church. You may be seated. For tonight's Spotlight on the Arts, we will feature special guests from the Kirby High School marching band. Under the direction of...[181.31][181.31](laughter) We know that they're in the house! Under the direction of MCS graduate Joel Beard and Principal Stevon Hunter, both former band members of Tennessee State's Aristocrat of Bands, Kirby High School students and faculty will continue to stand tall. As you may be aware, Kirby High School students, faculty, and staff have overcome extraordinary circumstances, and we look forward to hearing them tonight. Board members? Board members, we just want to acknowledge the adversity that our community of Kirby has gone through. If you all could stand and do your Kirby strong, Kirby strong!
Needless to say, Madam Chair, Kirby band is obviously still very Kirby strong.
Yes, they are![543.29][543.29](laughter) Just want to acknowledge, because the community of Kirby and the supporters, we want to acknowledge how graceful they've been through this transition and really just supporting our students and our faculty. We're thankful for them. We also would like to recognize, as part of our special recognition, we'd also like to recognize our supporters to check out our most recent SES Arts Matter video on social media pages, which features Christina Martinez, an outstanding violinist at Hickory Ridge Middle, as well as musical classes are vital to the student's success. In fact, music students are three more times likely to attend high school regularly. If Ms. Martinez is present tonight, we would like to make sure to acknowledge her. If not, please make sure to check that out on our social media pages. We are now on the question of the approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda? And before Superintendent, before you speak, I do want to acknowledge other board members that are present that were not here at roll call: Mr. Woods, Ms. Love, and Ms. Bibbs. All right, Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to add a few items. There's an SES Board Member Strategic Fund/School Funds Allocation Program Resolution. There's a contract with CBRE to do some project management that the board's been asking for and we're totally supportive of. And then there's a resolution for reassignment of non-recurring funds so that we can purchase our textbooks through county commission funds.
Okay. Any other amendments to the agenda? Seeing no other amendments to the agenda, we are now ready for a roll call vote.
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Orville? Board Member Woods? Board Member Love? Board Member McCormick? Board Member Jones? Board Member Bibbs? Board Member Coleman? Board Chair Avan?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
That motion is approved. We would now like to make sure we have public comments from the board. Tennessee law makes no specific provisions for the participation of the public at meetings of local boards of education. However, board policy provides that not more than thirty minutes of each regular business and special call meeting shall be devoted to public comment. Speakers must state their name, home address, organization he or she is representing, if any, and subject of the presentation before they are permitted to proceed. Speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs that concern them. Speakers are asked to refrain from using names of personnel or names of persons connected with the school system, particularly when lodging a complaint. Speakers will not be permitted to engage in gossip, make defamatory comments, or use abusive or vulgar language. The chairman shall have the opportunity, the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who is disruptive or does not adhere to board rules. The timer projected on the screen to your right and directly behind the board will turn yellow when you have thirty seconds remaining. When you hear two bells, your time has expired. We have four speakers to...
Charles Scott, 3689 Oakberry Street, 38116. Again, he speaks on behalf of United Shelby County PTA. Hopefully, he's going to be having the folders, there's a lot of material on there. But again, fifty-four thousand words, and so what I usually do is show my words and pictures. So I've got about seventeen thousand words in those folders. First of all, I did an update. I had our tour to attend the Swearingen Center on October 29th with a beautiful program. Also, I had our tour to attend a Frasier Community PTA TSA meet and greet on August 30th, which is a big celebration. Also, we really want to say thanks to Commissioner Teresa Jones and Charles Coleman. Appreciate them coming out. I know many of you are busy, but they were being our meet and greet and meeting some of our parents. Really appreciate that. We had a great turnout, and we have it right here in this spot of the corner. Also, I had the honor of starting a new PTSA president on college side, and that new director president is crucial, okay? Clay, yes, on September 13th. So she's involved with PTA, she's on the top of the office of the law. Also, I had our tour to attend the Sandy Children's Track and High Line of prison form on September 18th. And also, I had our tour to attend the Sherman Forum of Government of PTA meeting in Cardigan on September 20th, the New Year of Six, to attend it there. I put this information here, and we all thought that it was important that we read out to all of school districts, we're reaching for funding, we're getting in front of commissioners, we want to make sure we know we have endorsed everyone within Shelby County. And also, you can see on your package, a letter from National PTA, where we took action and sent out to PTA leaders to take action and try and close an IRS loophole that takes tax dollars and give them private school. And last but not least, I shared this picture that I took on the commercial appeal on October 28th, and I shared with our PTA leaders, talking school prayer. And it talks about school boards, I thought it was in, and they made great deals on that in front of funding. And the French school, he made great, that our test schools be good. And the teachers made great, give us a great class and patience. But the children, they're looking out for safety. So the bottom line is, we always want to listen to our children, we always want to make sure that we keep them first. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Lisa Jorgensen, 743 Beasley, Memphis City, with the United Education Association. Good afternoon, Shelby County Board members and superintendent. Thank you for allowing me to speak. The United Education Association of Shelby County is the local affiliate of the Tennessee Education Association and the National Education Association. We represent our members who are both full and part-time employees of Shelby County Schools. We welcome teachers and teacher types such as librarians, school counselors, and school psychologists, administrators such as principals and assistant principals, educational support professionals such as office staff and teacher assistants, and even substitute teachers. We were so excited to hear that all employees of Shelby County Schools would receive no less than fifteen dollars per hour. We were very disappointed to understand that that had been a misspoke mistake, that part-time employees of Shelby County Schools would not receive that hourly wage. Poverty is a huge problem in Memphis and Shelby County. We can all agree to that. The part-time workers employed by Shelby County Schools are our students, family members. They are our community members. We can support our students also by acknowledging the need of the part-time employees of Shelby County Schools to earn a living wage of fifteen dollars per hour or more. Please do what's right. Pay all our employees' living wage. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Gail Tyree. I'm the executive director of ASPI of the 1733. And before I address the board, I also just want to say thank you to Ms. Branch for being with us this afternoon. I always look forward to working with her, and I just want to commend her in front of the board that she does a great job of working with us.
Board Member McKissick? Board Member Orville? Board Member Woods? Board Member McCormick? Board Member Jones? Board Member Bibbs? Board Member Coleman? Board Chair Avan?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
Minutes are approved. Well, now moving on to the committee reports. For my chair report tonight, I just want to say a special congratulations to all of the schools that were removed from the priority list. It is, I think, a...[1176.22][1176.22](applause) And I never want to steal the Superintendent's report, but these are things that I think we want to make sure to acknowledge, we want to make sure the hard work, the dedication of those administrators and staff people who have worked so hard to help our kids have a game to play in. I'd also like to thank Commissioner Waley for joining us tonight, our new, his new Chair of Education for the County Commission. Had a long-standing relationship with Mr. Waley. Congratulations on your new role as Chair of Education Committee. I know that we're working very closely together, and we appreciate you coming out to hear about the issues first hand that are going on with this board. I would also like to invite board members out on next Wednesday. There will be a back-to-school drive that we are hosting in South City. And Ms. McKissick, who'll get a special invitation, the Women's Foundation is sponsoring this event, but we will be giving away over a thousand backpacks to the kids at LaRose and BTW School. So we always want to make sure that board members have a vocal invitation to help us support those kids who are doing so well. And LaRose and BTW were two schools that, LaRose reward school and BTW was both a Level T-VAS program. And so we want to make sure to acknowledge the hard work that they're putting in, so I want to invite folks out to join. We will now have Academic Performance Committee report, Ms. Bibbs?
Thank you, Chair. So academic performance, we actually have three themes that are on the agenda tonight, which is discovery ed, 50 ed, leadership grant, and our constant conversation thing, Dr. Doris Ray, making sure that we're always talking about what this looks like and the changes that are in on an everyday basis, so that way we can get feedback on community. The first thing I do is take it back to Dr. Ray, and we'll get back to Academic Performance Committee and talk about where the issues are and how we can plug issues. One exciting thing about academic performance is, we actually kicked off our first podcast of SES Reveal this past Thursday, and of course, the first person to interview was Dr. Doris Ray, Academic Operations, because so many departments fall under him, so that thirty minutes went by very quickly. Not really sure when eighty-eight point five, I think it's actually next week they're gonna put it on the air, but it's the goal of SES Reveal to have conversations, and it is a conversation, not a interrogation. I would say, Dr. Ray said pretty well, my questions to him on last Thursday, we're gonna be talking about all the great things that happen in SES, who are those people that are possible, whether it's the superintendent, whether it's, you know, chief cabinet members or community members, as well as teachers, principals, and students. The whole goal is to make sure that people constantly are talking about the positives that happen in SES on a weekly basis. So thank you to Dr. Ray for keeping us off with that. My next guest hopefully will be the superintendent, so we can talk about all the great things happening regarding reward schools. And that's it. Thank you.
Audit budget and finance committee. I'll make the report with this committee. We did have a meeting on yesterday to discuss the, actually, unassigned fund balance, making some assignments for that fund balance, and also for those items that... We talked about a couple of different things. We know that we need to approve textbooks for the science textbooks, so there was a conversation around that, about unbudgeted positions within the district. And so the administration is making a couple of recommendations today that will be before the board in the resolution. Board members, I think it is the will of the board that we had deeper discussion and get more background, and so we will wait until next month to make those additional recommendations or approve those additional recommendations for fund balance. There will only be two that will be presented to us today in the resolution, and that's really so that board members have time, more time to review. Moving on to capital needs and facilities committee.
We met last week, and Beth, do you want to run over the two items we discussed?
Sale of...
Grace Creek.
Grace Creek, and then also you approved the sale of...
Vision Prep.
Yes.
The... Yep, so we met, we talked about the forty-two acres at Grace Creek to surplus that. I think we had a consensus to sell all forty-two acres, which would mean we need to hasten us consolidating the CNC to its location, which, incidentally, we also discussed its cost is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a month, not to be in our own location, but to have it spread out into random spots. And then also, we had a proposal from Vision Prep to buy Riverview Middle, the old Riverview Middle, and we had a offer that we didn't deem high enough back in the summer, and they came back with an offer, and there was consensus from the, from the group there that day to sell it to them. Questions?
All right, moving on. Community Outreach and Engagement Committee report.
Thank you, Chair. I do want to let board members know, we will have a meeting on October 23rd. I also want to advise board members of a new initiative that we're gonna do with the superintendent. So beginning October 17th, we will have soup with soup, and it's just, we're gonna have soup, salad, dessert with the superintendent, and we're gonna start with District One. So each board member will have an opportunity, where parents will be selected based on a online process, so they just submit their name, submit their child's schooling name, and these parents will have an opportunity to sit down with the superintendent and discuss ideas, certain concerns. We do know that there are some concerns that will have to be sent to other departments, but this would just be an opportunity for parents who may have never had an opportunity to sit down with the superintendent and, you know, have a conversation with him, because we know that parental involvement is so important, and this is just an initiative that we're gonna do. We're gonna start off small, because I want to do it right, and then next year, we could possibly talk about expanding. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Evaluation Committee report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, annually, we are required to evaluate the superintendent, and it's important that we complete the evaluation as soon as possible, and we will be using the same instrument that we have used in previous years. However, with input from the chair, I would like to recommend some changes in the process to address board members' concerns with the instrument. So to prepare for the evaluation, I would like to ask the superintendent, superintendent to prepare for the process by submitting information to help us accurately review the process, progress, and the opportunities for improvement. This should be reviewed by the board using qualitative data in each goal and objective. This should be provided to the board members for review in two weeks' time. Once submitted, the board can request additional data to help them objectively review his performance. The data points will be an enhancement to help the board members objectively review the superintendent's performance rather than subjectively under the broad categories. If, with approval of the board, I'll be sending you a timeline by the end of the week to review, edit, and approve.
Ms. Gerald Housen?
No, so I certainly am supportive and, you know, know what the board's concerns are, because I'm very excited about the data, so can't wait to talk about that. But I do want to just push in on the board a little bit, because this is supposed to be done in September, and I know that, you know, things happen, so I do want to ask the board to at least let's have this done by October, because it has an impact on me. So I do want to, I'm open to extending it, but I want to make sure we get this done by October.
And respectfully, I think that that's a reasonable request for this board. I think with Mr. McCormick and board members being able to give some feedback and approving some of, if there's additional data that they want to see, so that once we're moving forward, we can also think about simultaneously creating an opportunity and space for this board to agree on some goals for moving forward in the next school year that could also be evaluated next year. But I think in light of our timeframe, we want to do, make sure that board members have an opportunity to look at data, to really think about objectively how they want to rate performance of your performance, because as you're holding your staff accountable, this board will want to make sure that we're holding you accountable. And so with that timeline, we'll keep in mind that the board's, the superintendent's request and this board's acknowledgement of trying to get that completed by the end of October.
And can I also make a request, Madam Chair? Because I believe in my contract, we're supposed to have an informal, you know, feedback section within six months, and we're there, so maybe we can do a retreat where we talk about, give board gives feedback, and then figure out what goals the board wants to set and what, you know, evidence the board wants to see in support of that, because I mean, now we're probably week six now in school, so I want to make sure we do that sooner rather than later.
I think that if we are able to do that at a simultaneous rate of making sure that we get this particular evaluation done, and I'll send an email out to board members to... and I'll send an email out to board members to really try to poll the time for a retreat for us to be able to accomplish some of those goals, setting those forth for this year.
Thank you.
Seeing no other lights, we're gonna move forward with Internal Board Operations Committee.
Thank you Chair. So we did have an IBO committee meeting, and within that was a discussion from Dixon Hughes, which I think has already been addressed by the superintendent. One other thing I do want to say, thank you Superintendent for addressing the fact that we need to push regarding, coming together regarding your goals, because we are operating in a suspended policy at this present day, so we need to do everything we can do to get back on track. I appreciate your work around that, as well as my colleagues. I'm gonna urge you guys to make sure you respond very quickly, in a quickly manner, so that way we can get back into compliance regarding that policy. Thank you.
Legislative Advocacy Committee report.
Thank you Madam Chair. Today, we were able to meet with Class, as well as Tony Thompson, our lobbyists for our legislative agenda in Nashville. Had a great presentation by our board members today for that committee meeting. Just a couple highlights as we went over our 2018 objectives, accomplishments, as well as looking forward to 2019. There were $48 million allocated for BEP inflation, $18 million, again, these are statewide numbers, I want to make sure I mention that. $18 million for enrollment growth, $28 million for healthcare, $13 million for interventions, and $10 million allocated in the new BEP funding formula for priority schools. Superintendent, I think it's important that we also talk about the $55 million that was allocated for teacher salaries. Because too often, and we've asked that we, that the state do a better job of communicating that. We've talked to our communication staff and encouraged them to put out talking points around this. That $55 million, when the governor mentioned that, equates to about $12 per pay period, per teacher. When you allocate that through the BEP formula. And so the misconception that that's 4% in increased salary is simply a misconception. And so I don't know how many times you need to say it, but it's simply the facts need to be there. Hopefully, under the new governor leadership, we can A, stop them from saying that when it simply isn't true, or B, that they have to show what does those dollars replicate, what does those dollars represent per school district? So you can then have a truth in communication to our teacher unions and whatnot, so they can know exactly what type of pay raise that should be indicated. But even with that, I want to thank you for the fact that even though we didn't see it in the BEP funding formula, I do think that HR and the school district did approve a 3% pay increase for our employees. So, but I do think we gotta do a better job of helping the state communicate that information. With that, 31 new legislators, at least 31 new legislators will be in Nashville come January. Will have a new governor, there'll be new leadership in the House Education and Finance Committee. And also eight new, I think I got that number right, county commissioners, is that the right number, Commissioner Waley? Eight new county commissioners, so there will be no shortage of new relationships that need to be built. With that, we brought on board, want to commend our general counsel for partnering with Dean and Associates to make sure that we also have additional boots on the ground to help make sure that those conversations continue to be happening about how our legislative bodies can continue to support public education. And that concludes my report.
Thank you Mr. Woods. Moving on to procurement, Ms. Jones.
Thank you Madam Chair. We did have a meeting, Procurement Committee meeting on September 18th. There were three items on the agenda. All three items are items that we've discussed in the past. The first was the Student Perception Survey. Initially, board members had concerns about the makeup of the committee that was going to determine that particular item. So our suggestions were taken into consideration. I think there's a new, new members were added, and there's a timeline to send that back out and hopefully bring back a recommendation for us, I think after the first of the year, is that correct? Or maybe before? But they're working on a timeline for that. The second item was the Substitute Services. Again, there was a conversation about whether there are two models to bring it in-house and how much that would cost. I think we were presented with at one cost at one meeting, but I think there was some more, a second look, and there was some additional costs that probably should have been added. And so there are new numbers, the new actual dollars that were added, what it would look like to bring it in-house. And then, of course, there's the, they're working through the finalization of the outsourced model. And they call it something else, but I'd say outsourced. And the issues basically were concerns about how we control what those individuals would be paid if we looked at the outsourced model, and how we have real input and preserve the principals who have dedicated staff. Who, well, dedicated people who want to work at that school and they don't have the access. So basically, I asked the, to have a presentation side-by-side comparison for board members to determine and ask questions and on that item when it's ready. And the third item was the short-term and long-term disability. That was a new and final, I think, RFP on that, and the recommendation, I don't know that we had enough to vote at the, at the... We're bringing it next month, okay, but we did have a final recommendation on that.
Ms. Jones, are all of these items being brought forth in October?
I don't, I think the substitute, I mean, the short-term and long-term disability, yes. The other two, no. The subservices also? Okay, all right.
And just ask, because I know we've had lengthy discussions about...
Right, so for sure, the short-term and long-term disability is in October. We're going to have the other, I think the Substitute Services at the procurement meeting, and then we'll know from there whether we're gonna move it to the agenda. But I think the Perception Survey is a few months out.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jones. Superintendent, your report.
Just a few things, Madam Chair. I want to let the board know Monday, from 12 to 1:30, I'll be on the panel with Sharon Griffin, Robyn Webb, Bob Nardo, sponsored by the New Memphis Institute. Just general discussion around education. It's called Celebrate What's Right. So I think, Lynn, we had some tickets if any board member wants to attend, okay, if anybody wants to attend. And then secondly, just want to address the $15 hour part-time situation, because I do want our employees to know that we actually are listening. I'll start, board, by saying that, you know, Martin Luther King said that it was criminal for people to be working a full-time job and bring home a part-time wage. So we start from the proposition that we want all of our full-time employees to earn a living wage. And as the time goes by, I don't want there to be some kind of stain because the board led in making sure that its full-time employees have a living wage. And I think the board knows there are all kinds of differences in types of employees. Part-time employees don't get benefits, full-time employees do. Part-time employees don't get vacation pay, full-time employees do. So there's nothing out of the ordinary between treating part-time and full-time employees different. So our commitment and what we've always says, and it bothers me when people get up here and say we said something different, because we've always said we wanted to lead on making sure our full-time employees get a living wage. Now, having said that, I know this board is very sensitive to making sure all employers are treated fairly. So what we're proposing to do is at least bring the data to the board and maybe Audit Budget Finance Committee to show what the cost will be if you take all employees up to $15 an hour. So, but I don't want there to be this notion out there that we're trying to treat people differently or unfairly. And the reason for us doing what we're doing is if you have a full, a part-time job, then by its very nature, that's not your full-time job. But if you have a full-time job, that's your primary source of income. So we want to make sure that those full-time employees have a living wage. But we'll bring the data so the board can weigh in and give us some direction on whether or not you want to, you know, make it just applicable to everybody. I just want to say that. And then also want to say, board members, and I'll go back to your statement, Ms. Chair, I want to go back to the thunder. You know, it's just amazing here that when we had the rotan infestation at Kirby, I think every media station and their cousins were beating down our door to talk about what's going on. Can somebody get on camera? Can we redo this? Get a statement, blah, 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 blah. But when you have great data around student achievement, crickets. So I just wanted to say, just want to read, because I know the listening public is listening. Shelby County Schools received the second highest rating on the Tennessee Department of Education's 2018 Accountability Report. SES earned advancing status for overall student performance and performance in student subgroups. This rating means the district is meeting the state's expectations for performance in English Language Arts, Math, and Science, as well as ACT scores and participation, English Language proficiency, graduation rate, and reduction in chronic absenteeism. SES earned exemplary status for reduction in chronic absenteeism and EL proficiency among EL learners. SES also had 37 SES-managed reward schools, which means based on a number of factors, these are some of the schools that are performing at the top level in the state. I'm gonna say it again, 37 SES reward schools. And I do want to point out, I think about A.B. Hill. A.B. Hill, for years, was at the bottom of the list. They got a new leader last year. It was her first year as a principal. She took the school not only from a Level 1 to a Level 5 and made them a reward school, but they did so well that they earned their way off the priority list in one year. I hadn't seen any stories on that. LaRose Elementary, I think that we talked about the backpack giveaway, Madam Chair. You know, also had double-digit gains in every tested category, and they also earned their way off the list.
Yes, they did.
Also, just want to point out that we had 11 schools to earn their way out the priority list. I know that we've had a lot of discussions up here, and the board has been so supportive of the work at IZON. I know Mr. Woods pushes us around as it's sustainable. But I think because of this board's commitment, you know, to not just the top performing schools, but all schools, you are seeing extraordinary results in these schools. And I know if I don't say it, I can't rely on some of our media friends to say it. So I just want to just be clear that last year and over the past few years, it hasn't been hard, it hasn't been easy. We got a long way to go, but teachers are working their behinds off. I see Ms. Rucker out there, I see some of the Kirby folks out here. And I know it's been bumpy, I know it's been tough, but we are making a difference on behalf of kids in Shelby County. Not, and as somebody says, a rising tide lifts all boats. So we are focused on priority schools. We're kicking the ASDs behind. You know, as we start talking about moving schools off the priority list, we have some of the highest performing schools. People forget, because we have such a school district and all the negative attention on the poor performing of priority schools, but we probably have 40 schools that are better than any schools in the state. And so I just want to make sure that the board knows, the public knows, the media knows that while we have a long way to go, we certainly are making steady and good progress. And then lastly, board, just so you know, October 25th, I have been nominated for the Green Gardner Award. I think it's the award from the Council of Great City Schools for leadership and, you know, because the district, because teachers are working their behinds off, and we're doing well, we're being noticed, maybe they're not focused on it here. But nationally, folks know what we're doing, so just want to let you guys know that, and thank you guys so much.
Ms. Jones.
Mr. Superintendent, when you bring the information about the part-time and what that would look like, it would be helpful to me to understand the length, how long the part-time worker, the average worker has been in that status? And have there been opportunities for them to move to full-time? Because sometimes people, they're stuck there because they want to move, and then some people may do it by choice. So it would be helpful to me to the extent we can determine, you know, the length. I know some organizations have a set amount of time that you can be part-time, because they don't want to take advantage or have a person in that status that will prevent them from doing something else. So again, I know some people choose that, some people may want to move to another level. So it would be helpful for me to just kind of know. And of course, there will be a breakdown of what type of position those are.
We'll do it.
Mr. Woods.
Thank you. I think Board Member Jones, Superintendent, first of all, again, congratulations on the accomplishments and the great work that's happening in the district. I do think we gotta make sure we're telling our own story there. As it relates to part-time, and I think the lady who spoke may have be gone now, so perhaps as we ask someone to tell the story regarding our successes and performance, we can make sure that we share, that we are talking about and having a real conversation around the part-time employees. I'm interested not only in the data that Board Member Jones asked about, but finding out, are we talking about real career pathways for our part-time staff? Particularly if they're working in jobs, and I think about facilities and operations particularly. Our hard-working cafeteria workers, I know that that job may not be a full-time job, but what else could we be doing to tie more responsibilities into their work? Where you may be working in the cafeteria the first half of the day, but you're helping with some after-school programs or whatnot in the later part of the day. I do think we ought to be looking at, or if we can look at our high volume of part-time staff, and can they be consolidated into full-time? And are we surveying our part-time employees and asking them, are you interested, to Teresa's point, are you interested in full-time employment? And what are we as a district doing to make sure that we are creating those pathways for them to grow into full-time opportunities? Posting jobs internally first to make sure they get first right of refusal for jobs that we think they may qualify for. Taking a new look at our qualifications, are there things that we're asking for in a job that we may not should be asking for? FedEx went away from asking for four-year degrees in their IT department, because they realized that many of those jobs simply needed certifications, and it opened up new employment opportunities to people that have previously been part-time hub employees. So I think we gotta think differently. I'm not putting that weight totally on the superintendent, but I would ask that you really push your chiefs to really think about how we take these individuals who want to grow with the district, and not just saying we raising pay rates to $15 an hour, but how are we growing people into meaningful careers to create more opportunities for them and their families? And I think we can do a better job. Being such a large employer in the city of Memphis and the state of Tennessee, I do think we can take a meaningful effort to try to grow them into meaningful jobs within the district.
Ms. Bibbs.
Thank you Chair. Actually, Board Member Jones and Board Member Woods have said probably some of my same thoughts around part-time employees. I look forward for us to talk about it further, to figure out what's the best solution to be able to help those workers. I think some great ideas have come up. I want to just talk a little bit more about this academic growth that we had. I think, you know, the superintendent said it best when he said about when we are dealing with issues and problems, it's a crowd full of people here. But we have an opportunity to truly celebrate the work of these students, these teachers, and school leaders around how hard they've pushed, the work that goes into that. Even if I look at the cabinet members who are part of that push, I think about the countless hours that we spend in academic performance, and the superintendent and I having conversations around what are the best investments for these students. It's working. So for me, I just wanted to, again, congratulate everyone around the work. It's working. We see results. I look forward to next school year when we're talking about moving that number from 37 and we're saying 50. I look forward to when we talk about moving the amount of people who are off of the list. And, you know, when we said, first use A.B. Hill as an example of being first year with a new leader and moving off of the list. I could not sit here and not be the president of Middle College PTSD and not talk about the fact that they are another year of being a reward school back-to-back. And what's happening in that building, as a proud parent, as someone who spends a lot of time in that building. And more importantly, as a high school, how difficult that is to show up every day in that way. And I think this year, they're actually the only high school on our reward school list. So again, shout out to my peeps, my kids, my, you know, the school leaders, everyone who supports their school on an everyday basis. Thank you.
Is that a conflict?
Um, no. I'm a parent first.
Thank you Ms. Bibbs. Ms. Love.
Superintendent, do we have any temp employees that work in nutrition?
I'm sorry, should I get that?
Do we have any temp employees that work in nutrition?
Yes.
Okay, so I would like to know... Okay, so I would like to know how many? How many? And because what I've been hearing is some of our full-time employees were demoted to part-time, and then some of our temps, some temps were brought in. So I would like to know how many we have and how long have we been using temporary employees when we have part-time employees where we could possibly increase the hours of those part-time employees?
So here's what I, and I know about that, Ms. Love, because that was one of the merger issues. We actually had three-hour employees who were considered full-time and they were eligible for benefits, and there was a huge cost to that. So I think that during the merger, we decided to not, you had to work seven hours or however much it was to be full-time. So those three-hour employees just were then reclassified as part-time, and a lot of those people left. And it's quite frankly, just hard to get people to come in and work three hours a day, so they had to use temps to fill the jobs. So it wasn't that somebody got demoted, it was just a reclassification because, you know, basically twelve hours a week at full-time and benefits created a whole nother set of issues.
Okay, so I think that's something that we need to discuss as well. And also, you know, I do want to commend all of our schools for showing great success, but Superintendent, I'll continue to push you and the administration on us having a tool of, for us to know exactly where our students are. Because not too long ago, we sat here and talked about the issues with Ten Ready. And now that we've had all this success, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna remove the issues that I still have, that I've had for several years. So just pushing you and your administration on ways to come up with a district assessment. So we'll know beyond a shadow of a doubt where our children are and the challenges that our children have. We can see the test, and we know where our children need to be supported in, so we can move the needle and, you know, continue this great success. Thank you.
So we listen to you, Ms. Love. I wish they were here, but Dr. Burden, I think Dr. Whitelaw had an Aspen Institute conference. And so they're working on a tool. I mean, you know, the board invested some dollars, and I think it was an I Station, I think, or I Ready, something that has a common formative assessment, and then we're also just working our own, so stay tuned.
All right. So Superintendent, again, congrats to the staff. I know that also, you know, it's hard to see all the folks behind the scenes who are making these kind of gains happen, but it's the folks who are sitting here tonight, your cabinet and staff, all of the ILDs, all of the folks behind the scenes who are also supporting those school leaders and teachers, and I don't want us to not acknowledge the hard work that your entire team is putting into this effort.
I appreciate that, Chair. But I do, to you, what you said, I think, you know, from the moment a child walks in a classroom, the most important person in a child's education are teachers. And, you know, we have a teacher leader group, I've got teacher advisory councils, and I just want to just thank them from the bottom of my heart, because even when we create situations that are less than ideal, they continue to respond. And I think if you look at the track over the last five years, it's something to build on, and we're proud of the work, and we're going to keep pushing. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other lights, we're moving on to special order items. It's now the, oh, General Counsel report, I apologize.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No report.
Okay. See, I was.
Wait, 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 wait. Don't you think a round of applause is due for the removal of the interim from the title?
Yes. Congratulations, Ms. Irvin.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Part of Jennifer's deal was that she could not make a report tonight. So she just, also, you know, obviously, Doc, obviously, you guys know Dr. Ray, he's been doing some great work, and the work that he's been doing is really chief-level work, so we have elevated him from assistant superintendent to chief. And then, obviously, Dr. Berg, very excited about his, you know, leadership in the academic department. So, you know, we are going to be moving forward kind of with a full compliment of people, and I know you guys would not be bashful about reaching out to these leaders. Thank you.
Congratulations. We, we're now moving on to special order. It's the election of the Shelby County, Shelby County Board of Education Chairperson for the eighteen-nineteen school board. I'll leave the floor open for nominations. Mr. McCormick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to submit a nomination of Ms. Avant for Board Chair.
Nomination from Mr. McCormick, there's not a second that's required for the nomination process? Are there any other nominations for the position?
Can we nominate ourselves?
Yes.
Okay, I'll decline.
Can you name that your superintendent?
Everybody got off their phones, though, Superintendent, and looked up for just a second, though.
Okay, no further nominations, nominations are closed. We have to have a roll call vote.
Board Member McKissick?
Aye. This is the roll call vote for election of Shante Avant as Board Chair.
Board Member McKissick?
Aye, again.
Board Member Ogilvy?
Pass. No kidding, aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Board Member Coleman?
Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
That motion is approved. I'd just like to take a moment and thank my colleagues. It's obviously an honor to serve in this position, and I look forward to working very collaboratively with a great group of folks. There are some really talented people on this board who are working very hard to help us get the academic achievement for our kids. I look forward to continuing to work this year for us and for our kids and what they continue to deserve. This is important work, could not do it without each of you. I appreciate the vote of confidence and look forward to a great year. We are now at the election of Vice Chair of the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year, and I have a call for nominations. Ms. Bibbs?
I'd like to nominate. No? You got it?
Oh, she, her light went on first, I'm sorry.
Um, nominating Stephanie Love.
Are there any other nominations on the floor?
I was going to suggest the same.
Great minds thinking alike. Seeing, seeing no other part, seeing no other nominations, we'll move forward with a roll call vote for Stephanie Love for Vice Chair.
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Ogilvy?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Coleman?
Aye.
Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
That is approved. Congratulations to Ms. Love.
Thank you to my fellow board members, and I look forward to working with the chair to do bigger and better things for two thousand eighteen-nineteen.
Looking forward to it, Ms. Love. All right, we are now moving forward with any, there's no unfinished business at this moment. So we'll move forward to any items for the consent agenda? Are there any items that need to be removed? We have added some, we haven't added any items, just.
We haven't added any to the consent agenda.
Okay. Any items that need to be removed for the consent agenda? Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda? A motion for approval of the consent agenda?
I move.
Thank you, Ms. McKissick. A motion, a second by Mr. Woods. I'm going to read those items and the amounts. Twelve point one, sorry, thank you. Twelve point two, Read to Be Ready Coaching Network in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Four point three, Educational Epiphany in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. Twelve point four, I Station Renewal, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of two hundred sixty-five thousand, six hundred and two dollars. Twelve point five, Phase Two of the two thousand eighteen Playground Installation Project in the amount of two hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred dollars. Twelve point six, the SCS Pipeline Grant in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Twelve point seven, Head Start Grant Budget Revision in the amount of one hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. Twelve point eight, Head Start Continuation Application in the amount of twenty-three million, nine hundred nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Twelve point nine, ACL Services LTD License Agreement in the amount of three thousand, seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. Twelve point one zero Fiscal Year, two thousand eighteen Farm-to-School Grant in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and two dollars. Twelve point eleven, Resolution Approving the Acceptance of Apple Inc. Common Stock Donation. Twelve point twelve, Resolution Approving the Sale of Apple Inc. Stock, Common Stock Donation. Twelve point thirteen, September twenty-eight Budget Amendment. Twelve point fourteen, September two thousand eighteen Capital Improvement Projects Budget Amendment. And that will be all for the consent agenda. And Ms. Jones? Did you have a item? Nope, okay. So can we get a roll, roll call vote for the consent agenda, please?
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Ogilvy?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Coleman?
Aye.
Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have eight votes in the affirmative.
Okay, the consent agenda is approved. We're now moving on request for action. We have thirteen point one, Armed Guard Services for the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year in the amount of one point five, one million, five hundred sixty thousand dollars. And I think these were just items that were moved in our last business, the work session, so make sure that we have any discussion.
Yeah, I think that there were some questions, I know that Beth submitted to Mr. Ogilvy, and I think to the whole board, so I don't know if there are any more questions. Around this, I think there were questions about what people said.
Mr. Ogilvy, we, this was the thirteen point one Armed Guard, this is on our request for action. Did you have any additional questions for this item?
No, I actually reviewed it, and I think that Ms. Fallon handled that very well, and I appreciate it.
Okay, could I get a motion?
Motion's up, Doc.
Um, motion, motion by Mr. Woods, second by Ms. Jones. Can I get a roll call vote?
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Ogilvy?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Com, pardon me. Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
Okay, that motion passes. Three point two, thirteen point two, School Board Member Strategic Schools Allocation Program Resolution. And Mr. Superintendent, I think this was an item that was added, wanted to get you to be able to speak on the school board allocation. Okay.
Ms. Jones?
Thank you. So, starting last, starting last year, there was a school board strategic fund allocation for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for each board member to provide enrichment programs, beautification, to really address some strategic and tactical needs for schools. As part of the resolution was to kind of re-up this annually to make sure that this was something that the board wanted to do. This resolution is approving the allocation, it has been budgeted, and the board office has done a really great job of putting together a manual to provide more guidance on how to use those resources, what are possible limitations as well. If it hasn't been sent out, I know it will be either later today or tomorrow.
Okay. Can I get a motion? Is there a motion on the floor? A motion by Mr. McCormick? A second by Mr. Ogilvy, and then we have discussion? Mr. Ogilvy?
Thanks, Madam New Chair. The, so I think that is great, Shanice and Karen, for putting that together. I will say that one issue took more of my time last year trying to work with the schools and get it paid. Is there, to, like, if they, let's just say they were getting a climbing wall in the, at Shady Grove Elementary, which they did, it just, it became very cumbersome from the schools, they're not used to going through, is there no other way to do that, or do they have to go through our Byzantine purchasing process in order to do something? Because it almost turns off the schools.
Yeah, it's a great question, Board Member Ogilvy, and I had the same.
It's not your fault.
No, no.
And you were helpful.
It's a great, it's a great question. I had the same question as well.
He said it was best fault.
It was the same question, and I actually, with Mr. Patman, we contacted the comptroller. So one way that we thought was, could we actually allocate the funds directly to the schools and make it a part of their Student Activity Fund? And if it needed to roll forward, it could just roll forward. We did contract the comptroller in terms of that, and they said they would not recommend us doing that. And it should go through our regular process. Yeah, but we're hoping that if we can start earlier, maybe we can curtail some of that.
So, I mean, if we get our grants in early in the school year, don't rush it at the end of the school year, okay. And I don't think we're going to take your recommendation that the new board members only get a half share. I didn't think that was fair. So I'm against that.
There's a third. There's a third, Mr. Wood.
And Mr. Ogilvy, since you mentioned it, I was, I was thinking that was something that you said, so that, you know, the more seasoned board members could get more, but I don't think that that's a good idea at all. Ms. Love?
So I also want to thank our board office for the hard work they do, even with board members like myself sending in last-minute requests. Thank you for getting it done. And I do want to let the listening public know that this board has been able to get, or do a lot of more things for our schools. We helped Board Member Jones in her district to open a planetarian. We, we have helped other board members get things in their district. So Scott McCormick, I'm going to reach out to you this year because I need some things. Board Member Bibbs, Board Member Jones. But I do think that this is a, this is a great idea. But also, Chief, Chief Johnson, I do know that going back to what Board Member Ogilvy stated, any school that does, that purchases anything, they have to go through a bid process, and they have to use a vendor. So something that I've suggested in my district, Mr. Ogilvy, and you might can pass this on, before they send me what they need, I ask them to go and do the three-bid process. Send me all three bids, and then we can go from there. And to me, that alleviates a lot of the headache, so I can just give it to Chief Johnson, and he can take care of the business that needs to be taken care of.
And Board Member Love, I think part of what we'll include as well is, I think last year was a learning for us. So I think that's a great best practice, and we may have a short list of some best practices from all the board members just to share, especially for our two new board members as well.
Ms. Jones?
I'd say based on these guidelines, I'm, I'm out of compliance because the maximum amount, I exceeded that with Craigmont for a wonderful cause. So, so, but I also concerned about the minimum amount. There are a lot of projects that just are not five thousand dollars that board members might want to do. I know the reason behind it is you have a hundred here and a hundred dollars there. It's really difficult to keep up with that, the process, that volume, and those small amounts. So I guess I'm going to try to stay with the five thousand, but I think that board members should have the option if there's a particular project. Keep it in mind that, that if you have a bunch of hundred-dollar projects, or even thousand, fifteen hundred, it gets to be, but we all have a lot of schools, and so to try to spread, spread the love. So that was, that was just my comment.
And I think we And I think we, we as a board should really decide, you know, if there's a lower threshold that we want for that, um, understanding that the administration has the, the bulk of that paperwork that has to come through. And I think this recommendation was really based on how that volume needs to be handled. Ms. Bibbs?
So I was just gonna echo what, um, Board Member Jones stated around flexibility about the amounts. Um, last year I was able to do something for every school, thanks to, uh, other board members who actually helped me with that. But I think within being able to do that, I would have some schools that would want 2,500 and then other schools that if I can give them the whole 125, they would have been happy with that. So I think we just need to make sure that there's some flexibility in that. I would ask though that Business Ops spends a little bit more time around understanding the needs of schools because they are actually asking for things such as marquees and, uh, and when you're buying, let's say, three or four, then how do we go in and do a purchase like that, um, as one? And then making sure we have the right people to put those up. Because most of the schools now at this point, once they realize one school could get a marquee, they've all, I already have two ass skin for marquees. So I think as we were going through that process, we, everybody was all over the place, but now we have a general idea of what people need regarding that, let's move forward, uh, in a different way.
Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Johnson, um, the process that Mr. Orgel talked about, um, is that all, is it all taking place in your office or, uh, or it goes through multiple departments?
Goes through multiple departments. Um, really the, the board chair, I mean, the board office does a lot of the administrative work, doing, uh, um, reaching out to the schools, um, even kind of following where the funding and how the spending is being done, even, uh, the amendment. And then we're providing the funding code, um, and keeping track of the amount. And then Ms. Phelan's team is kind of also helping in terms of the procurement process, making sure the bids and everything is appropriately done for around procurement.
Okay. And, uh, with, with everyone trying to support every school, has there been any type of training or any, uh, information sharing with our school leaders to let them know, uh, A, that these allocations are out there, so go ahead and start shaking down your board members, but, uh, but, but, but.
Got a phone call today, Mr. Woods. A phone call today.
But two, uh, making sure that they under, they fully understand the process, uh, and to be patient, you know, with the administration. Uh, but I, but I, but I think I heard you say that someone is shepherding the process. Is it an additional burden? I don't have to answer that right now, y'all keep smiling, board. But if, so what I'll say to you, Superintendent Hobson, uh, uh, Chief Stockton, is that if we see it as additional burden on the board office, you're talking about a million plus in allocations, uh, perhaps those part-time folks looking for a full-time opportunity, perhaps that's a job that, that's what you do every day is making sure that process is shepherded through and done effectively and efficiently and, uh, perhaps, Ms. is looking at me, perhaps someone's already on top of that. But if we, uh, but if we determine that that, uh, could create an additional strain on our board office, I hope we're having that conversation.
No, that, that's more than reasonable and no, we haven't communicated with the schools just yet, but that will be a part of the plan is to communicate with them. I think that was a lesson learned last year, um, a, around communication to schools.
And I think it is something, if board members are amenable, that we could have the board office send out to our individual districts just about the allocation process, um, so that they are aware of that. Um, and Ms. Everson, maybe you could draft something that board members could review. Uh, I'm sure each board member has their own nuance, they want to say, to their schools and their district, but if you could share something that maybe board members could send out, uh, or the board office could send out on our behalf, um, in order to let our schools know. And just for Ms. McKissick, uh, and Ms. Coleman, that this is a fun part of your job. It really is to be able to do things for schools that oftentimes they have not been able to do and a small amount of money can make such a difference in what schools and the culture and climate of those schools are. So you will be getting calls from your schools, um, asking for opportunities. And so as you're doing your school visits, you may have already encountered some needs that those schools have and through this allocation process, you're able to have them make application for those projects and then you'll, it's an approval process. I do want to acknowledge that, um, Vernally does a great job of really being on top of that entire process, um, and she is diligent in speaking, um, following up with those principals and school leaders and keeping board members abreast. So I, I want to thank her for all of her hard work and dedication in that process. Ms. Love?
So, um, Chief Johnson? So we're not approving allocations this month, right?
Yes, that's what we're doing now.
Oh, we are? Okay.
So that we, the resolution to, a resolution for us to start that allocation process. So we're not allocating funds this month? No, you wouldn't be able to allocate it into October. I know, I'm sorry. She, she may have gotten some call, I, I literally got a call from one of my schools today.
Some interest.
So board members, um, we did have a, we have a motion and a second on the floor, so could I get a roll call vote for approval of the resolution for strategic funds allocations for the 2018-19 school year?
Board Member McKissick.
Aye.
Board Member Orgel.
Aye.
Board Member Woods.
Aye.
Board Member Love.
Aye.
Board Member McCormick.
Aye.
Board Member Jones.
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs.
Aye.
Board Member Coleman.
Aye.
Board Chair Avant.
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
That res, resolution is approved. We're now moving on to thirteen point three, the CBR Hiri Contract Amendment. Superintendent?
Thank you, uh, board members. We've been talking about this for a while. Um, this contract will allow, uh, third party to help us through our project management. I think the neat thing about this is we'll be funding this out of the money that we got our $90 million award from the county commission, uh, huge minority participation here, uh, so very excited about it. I think it's a $2 million contract.
2.038 million. This is the, uh, CBR Hiri contract for capital projects. Project management, thank you. Could I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Mr. Woods, a second by Mr. Orgel. Are there any other comments, Mr.?
Just, uh, again, I know Ms. Love always talking about me commending, um, administration superintendent, but I think I beat up on them enough, so every once in a while they should be commended. And, uh, I think, uh, Beth, you and your team, and I saw a number of board members who have communicated, uh, with, uh, our partners to make sure that these projects are done on time, within budget and that, uh, uh, capital, uh, reports are, are presented to this board. And so I think, uh, this particular vendor and the diligence you've done to, to bring somebody quality to this, before this body, I should be commended. So I just want to thank you and the superintendent for that.
Mr. Orgel?
The, uh, I, I think what you miss is that it's, um, Allworld, which is a local minority contractor, uh, CBRI and Hiri. So I think it's, it's great that we're developing local talent with, uh, Allworld and, uh, they've been very helpful with us on other projects and, uh, I'm, I'm really impressed with the work they've done. And I'm looking forward to, I think we briefly discussed it at the facilities meeting, the, as part of this project, I think we're on hold, uh, and they're about to meet a deadline of about 45 days for the, the C, the Central Nutrition Center. And we said, hey, we want to come back, we want to hear the cost on that. And, uh, because we're spending, as I said earlier, about $3 million a year in funds we don't need to spend because we're not centralized. And so we tasked, uh, Allworld along with Ms. Phelan to come up with a plan, which hopefully, and I checked on it, will be ready for next month's board meeting.
Awesome.
So that we can, hopefully our committee meeting and then the board meeting and then we'll have Mr. Hooks and his staff along with Beth present to us, uh, the plan. So hopefully next year we can be up and running in one location. So anyway, I want to thank Mr. Hooks with Allworld and Beth and her staff for getting things moving.
And Mr. Orgel, I know how, um, very personal this is, making sure that we are more fiscally sound with this particular, these projects and those moving forward. So I know that you've been very close to this work and I do want to commend the staff as well, um, with the selection of, of a vendor, a minority vendor that is doing an outstanding job and helping us to meet some of our needs. Ms. Love?
Uh, based on the comment that Board Member Woods made, Superintendent, I would like you to share with Board Member Woods that I actually sent you a compliment on the work of your staff Friday.
Christmas came early.
If there's no other comment, uh, um, comment, I do, Superintendent, I think it's al, always great for us to be able to acknowledge that this board's commitment to having minority participation, um, and not minority participation for the sake of it, but that you have great folks doing great work and that they should be able to do business with this district, so.
And I will say, I think out of this board's leadership, and we're still, you know, just tracking it, but, you know, I think our participation is well north of 20%, um, pushing 30% just in this calendar year. So I think that's, uh, I see Jake Allen back there saying higher than that. I think the commitment is, 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 is clear and we'll be able to get you guys a, a final number soon, but it's, it, I think that, you know, a couple of years ago, it was somewhere around less than 5% and now it's over 30%. I just think it speaks to the commitment that the board has shown.
Alright, can I get a roll call vote?
Board Member McKissick.
Aye.
Board Member Orgel.
Aye.
Board Member Woods.
Aye.
Board Member Love. Board Member McCormick.
Aye.
Board Member Jones.
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs.
Aye.
Board Member Coleman.
Aye.
Board Chair Avant.
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
That, um, contract is approved. We're now on our, uh, last item, thirteen point four, which is the Resolution Identifying Special Non-Reoccurring Expenditures for the Shelby County Board of Education's Fiscal Year 2018-19 Operating Budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The board probably recalls that when the county commission approved our budget, they set aside around $6 million or so, uh, if we can identify some non-reoccurring costs and we talked back then, I guess, remember April, about designated textbooks for that expenditure and this is just, uh, we'll just facilitate that.
Ms. Jones?
Not on this item, but I did want to make an announcement after the last.
Okay. Can I get, yes ma'am, um, can I get a motion for this?
Well, I do have a question on this item.
Okay. Well, well, let's, um, get a, so, um.
Both. An announcement after this item. So is this the same item we discussed yesterday?
Well, we're gonna, Ms. Jones, we're gonna make a motion in a second and then we'll have a discussion. Ms. Jones, a motion, a second by Ms. Bibbs? Thank you. Ms. Jones?
So is this the item we discussed yesterday that I was not able to grasp?
Yes.
So do we have the, the requested information, additional information that we asked for?
So let me separate that. So we did have the fund balance, balance discussion. All the information was sent by noon today, so all the board members should have that information, uh, by email. This is a discussion around the textbook. So what the county commission did is they increased our education fund by $8 million. We received six of that. And then they said, in order to fill the, the remaining gap, we're going to allocate $6.6 million of non-reoccurring funds. I've been contacted by the CFO, they're good to give us those funds. We need a formal resolution to say where we want to allocate those funds in order to receive them.
Okay.
Seeing no other lights, we're gonna, uh, have a roll call vote, please?
Board Member McKissick.
Aye.
Board Member Orgel.
Aye.
Board Member Woods.
Aye.
Board Member Love. Board Member McCormick.
Aye.
Board Member Jones.
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs.
Aye.
Board Member Coleman. Board Chair Avant.
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
That resolution passes. Ms. Jones?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to announce, uh, recognize three individuals who are here today, uh, working with the district on a voter registration initiative. Ms. St. Clair, Ms. Davis, Ms. Streeter, uh, thank you. Uh, I know this is, uh. They, I know that the, it's in the planning stages, they just met yesterday, uh, but they, I, I know that they are committing to transport students to Mississippi Boulevard prior to the, uh, deadline for registration, all 18-year-olds, and we know how important the November election is. So they reached out to me, I connected them with Chief Stockton and they are working together to make sure that we register every eligible student. And they, uh, have a bus trip and they have plans and I'm sure that once those plans are finalized, that they'll be, um, publicized through, uh, communications so that everyone will be aware of that and everyone can encourage all students and, and everyone they know to, to get registered to vote.
And Ms. Jones, I do want to say that Communications has been broadcasting this on social media today. There's quite a few, um, tweets just about this particular action, so they are working in conjunction.
And just again, thank Sarraz for, for working with the district to make this effort possible.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your time and dedication to this very important civic process. We appreciate it. Seeing no other lights, this meeting is adjourned.